...Lake School District Seventy-Six for Tuesday, December eighteenth. Roll call, please.
Orno? Hale?
Here.
Hoffman?
Here.
Castler?
Here.
Candela? Walker? Yaffe?
Here. Please rise and prepare your duties. I pledge allegiance to the flag. I cast my hands in the air. To the free and equal opportunity. For my nation and my God. Indivisible, everlasting. The justice of the world.
Sure. So, because this is a levy hearing, we do need to address this business first, but we will then soon follow that with our special presentation. Mr. Rogers will say a few words about the levy. But first, we open up the floor. Are there any public comments related to the levy this evening? Having no comments, we'll have a brief presentation about the levy, and then we'll move into our regular meeting.
Thank you. I'm sorry, uh, assuming no one's here for the levy, but, uh, I'll go through it pretty briefly. It's a requirement of the district to hold a public hearing for the tax levy. So just want to touch on the levy calendar. We presented a dependent levy on November thirteenth. There was a public notice in the paper on the seventh. Tonight, we are going to be presenting and approving the tax levy that's due to file with the county on the twenty-first. So, the tax levy really is just a requesting of levy dollars in order to run the school district next fiscal year. First step, we're going to turn the amount of revenue the district's going to need. We budget long-term projections. We put various administrators on the money we need. That's the amount we levy. We are a tax cap district, so it limits the amount of property taxes that the district can receive, five percent or CPI, whatever's lower. Current CPI is two point one percent, plus any new property. Uh, new property's not known at this time, but we project about two to four percent growth. School districts must, uh, deposit the revenue according to the Department of Accounting Manual and Illinois School Code, so that the amount of revenue the district receives is the tax rate times what the value says has value. That equals the revenue that we receive. So the county clerk is one responsible for calculating the final tax. This graph just shows some historical data of PAV. So it's really a inverse relationship. As PAV rises, the tax rate lowers. There's a little exception this year. Uh, when tax rate, uh, when property value increases faster than CPI and tax rates lower, but, uh, property value is increasing just slightly below CPI, about two percent. Uh, this just shows how reliant the school district is on property taxes. About seventy-five percent of revenue comes from that. This shows our last two extensions from two thousand sixteen and two thousand seventeen. We had roughly, uh, five point eight percent growth from the two thousand fifteen to sixteen levy, about four point nine percent growth. So this year, we're projecting slightly less, two point four, and we estimate about, uh, two hundred nineteen million dollars in PAV. So the blue column is what we call a balloon levy. That's what the district is requesting. I'll explain that in the next slide. And the yellow column is our best guess in what we actually just paid for. Balloon levy is, uh, it's a twofold request, basically. Under tax cap law, uh, if we don't request a certain amount of money, it's lost to us forever, so we can never recoup that. So it's what we need to make sure we request enough. And at the time the tax levies due, we don't know the actual new property in the district. It's not going to be known until about March. But, uh, taxpayers are protected under tax cap law, so if actual growth exceeds projected growth, that allows us to recoup any of that additional money. And if projected growth, uh, actual growth falls below projected growth, our taxpayers are projected under the tax cap law. Just a couple frequently asked questions as far as, you know, why doesn't the district lower its levy? Since we're a tax cap district, if we under levy, we never recoup that money. So we're estimating about a two hundred fifty thousand dollar increase in revenue. If we ask the same amount we did the prior year, assuming one percent CPI, we would lose out by about one point three million dollars for the prior year, because that's what we'd ever ask for, uh, a lower amount. And, uh, if you're wondering why the district, uh, the district's only getting an increase in CPI, why is my tax bill going up more than that? It strictly has to do with the value of your home in relation to others in the district. So if your value's higher than the previous year in relation to others in the district, uh, you may pay more than CPI. But if all, uh, homes were going up in value in relation to each other or staying the same, your tax bill would only increase by two point one percent. And as far as how the district's tax rate compares to others around us, we have the second lowest unit per student, about two hundred eighty-two thousand, which means our tax rate is the second highest, about four point seven percent. So we're just under, um, under line here. That's the end of the hearing. The presentation is very important.
All right. At this moment, we open up the floor for any public comments on any other topics. Having no comments, we will move to return at the end of the special meeting. If you have a motion to return, it's in session.
Neil? Alfred? Orno? Candela?
Yes.
Castler? Yes. Walker? Yaffe?
Calling to order the combined meeting for Diamond Lake School District Seventy-Six for Tuesday, December eighteenth. Roll call, please.
Orno? Hale?
Here.
Hoffman? Castler? Here. Candela?
Here.
Walker? Yaffe?
Here.
At this time, we open up the floor for any comments on the agenda I was presenting. Any comments? Having no comments, we can now finally move to our presentation meeting.
So at this time, I'd like to invite Dr. Braun and her group of students to kind of show their presentation. I know they have some special information they'd like to share with you because our district is celebrating a very special anniversary, and they're going to help us learn a little bit more about it.
I just. So in nineteen eighteen, for the centennial of Illinois, the eighth grade students of the one-room schoolhouse districts in the state of Illinois were asked to write histories of the school districts, and our district is one of them. And you can find this booklet online, which is really cool. And I thought, wow, it's by centennial. We should do an update during the next hundred years. So I asked a group of students if they weren't interested in doing something like that, and they said yes. So, uh, we have, I'm just going to read their, tell you their names here. This is Hannah Kruger, Malia Dezon, Caroline Hale, Gabriella Rayber, Ava McLean, Carter Loris, Brian Chen, Gayla Lee, Danny Shannon, Jonathan, Frankie Horton, and Matt Schleifli. And then Nathan Spector and Olo Holeda. Uh, also worked on the presentation, but they could not be here tonight. So I'm going to let them take it away.
Okay, so basically, on August twenty-sixth, eighteen eighteen, um, there were enough people living in the territory of Illinois now so that they could apply for a state. And so they did apply to become a state in union. On December third, eighteen eighteen, um, Congress got back to the people who applied for their territory known as Illinois, and Illinois entered, um, the union as the twenty-first state. And so on December third, two thousand eighteen, we celebrate Illinois turning two hundred years since it entered the United States of America, and that is why we are celebrating it. Dezon? Summary. Summary of the nineteen eighteen centennial booklet. The original nineteen eighteen centennial booklet mainly focused on the land of Libertyville, originally called Harding Grove, and its history. The place nowadays called Libertyville is actually only a small portion of what Libertyville once was. The place where the one-room schoolhouse is located is actually in modern-day Illinois. The original centennial booklet also focused on the original settlement in eighteen thirty-six. At this point in history, District Seventy-Six was not very old and was only a couple of years old. The original, the original one-room schoolhouse was built in eighteen forty-seven and is no longer in use.
This is the history of Diamond Lake District Seventy-Six. In eighteen forty-seven, the original Diamond Lake One Room Schoolhouse was organized. In nineteen eighteen, Illinois, the Illinois Centennial Booklet was created by students of Diamond Lake Elementary School House. In nineteen twenty-five, the Skyus Bosch and his wife sold the land of Diamond Lake for eight thousand dollars. In nineteen fifty-five, the land of Tierney School was bought for five thousand dollars. In nineteen fifty-nine, on August twelfth, more land was added on to Diamond Lake School. In nineteen seventy-two, the land of West Oak Campus was bought for fifty thousand dollars in a two thousand and one major addition for add-ons of Diamond Lake and West Oak Campus.
Together, in formation for this project, we interviewed Ms. Simone. She went to school here and also taught here as a teacher. She went to school here in the nineteen fifties and sixties, and the life back then for students was a lot different than it is now. Dress code for girls, they had to wear dresses. And boys had to wear belts and tuck-in shirts, where now there is no requirements on what can we wear, like in the past. If you were disobedient, you would face harsh punishments, where now it's not as bad of punishments due to the rules teachers have to follow. There, back in the past, there wasn't a lot of student input in their rules, where now there's a lot of input in the district rules by students. A long time ago, students had to walk across main roads to get to school, where now only students living in surrounding neighborhoods can walk to school. Grades also used to be split between buildings, where now all of one grade is in one building.
Ms. Simone has also provided us with information from her teaching experiences in the nineteen seventies, which compared today were very different. For example, female teachers had unspoken dress code to follow as they were only allowed to wear feminine clothing, which is much different to today, as teachers have almost free reign on clothing currently. Teachers' relationships with their students also have changed as teachers were much more strict and would deal out fairly harsh punishments. Now, teachers are much more friendly and touchy as previously, physical contact with a student was prohibited as it could be misconstrued. Now, there are many other changes, like lesson plans and student input, but we wouldn't be here for a long time if we said them all.
The first school bought was Diamond Lake in nineteen twenty-five. It was bought for a good thousand dollars. It was kindergarten through eighth grade at the time. The next school built was buried in nineteen fifty-five. The school was bought for five thousand dollars. After this, in nineteen seventy-one, District Seventy-Six was bought for, bought West Oak. The land was bought for fifty thousand dollars, and the school opened in nineteen seventy-three. All three schools had additions bought on at various times throughout the year. Today, Fairhaven is preschool through first grade. Diamond Lake is second grade and through fourth, and West Oak is fifth through eighth grade.
Uh, so this is the history of Fairhaven. Fairhaven's school property was bought in nineteen fifty-five. It was originally a K through eighth grade school until West Oak was built. Something that used to be at, at the school there was, uh, three trailers outside the school serving as the library. Um, also, they had some discontinued classes, such as French and German. Fairhaven will be closed next year.
History of. History of Diamond Lake. Diamond Lake originally had a different location as a one-room schoolhouse. Now, the school currently resides in a different location, but it has gone through some changes. The land was bought for eight thousand dollars from Grace and Carol Goodley in nineteen twenty-five, and additional four acres were bought in nineteen fifty-nine. The front of Diamond Lake has since been modified from the original design and graduations to admire its beauty through all of Diamond Lake's journey.
There have been many changes to Diamond Lake over its history. Many of these changes were done to the infrastructure and rooms of the school, like the cafeteria, which at the beginning didn't even exist. So students had to eat on the gym floor, which is really unsanitary, and the library and playground have also been improved and renovated. One outdated practice was the lack of a kinder at any of the schools. So the kinder took place at a church across the street. This called for another outdated practice, patrol boys, who were older students who would direct younger students across the street. Another fairly big change was the mascots, which were originally changed due to the inappropriateness of pirates to tidy schoolchildren. A boned-on contest for students took place to change the mascot. Many other changes took place, but we must move on to the next school.
The property of West Oak was bought by District Seventy-Six in nineteen seventy-one for about fifty thousand dollars. Uh, before, the school was, was an open classroom setup, which meant that there were no walls separating classrooms. The library had no walls to the left of the library. It was like an open area somewhere to a courtyard. Sports team, uh, there were only boys sports teams at the time, and the main sport was basketball, and Carl Sandberg was a big rival of the West Oak experience. And there has been six principals throughout West Oak, and Mr. Wilford was the longest-lasting, which, and he lasted about seventeen years.
During, during the history of West Oak, there have been some major changes to the school, starting with the infrastructure. Major changes were done between the school being built in two thousand one, which changed the school into less of an open-room school and to more of a tubing building. Many of these rooms have since been remodeled and more upgraded over the past years. Over these years, the school district had become more tech-based and backed than West Oak. Had one of the best computer labs in the county. This change to technology also caused the removal of outdated practices, practices like chalkboards, which eventually moved into pyramidal boards, and the school's B-club was also.
So this, oh, it does work. Um, so it's all. Okay, sorry. So as all of you know, District Seventy-Six has gone through many changes in the past few years and will continue to go through changes. This gym, which we are standing in, has been remodeled, and the other gyms are going to be remodeled as well. There have been new, uh, floors added to the hallways, new paint, new landscaping, and many other new things. In the future, there will be more air conditioning and library innovation centers, as you can see up there. Starting in the twenty nineteen, twenty twenty school year, there will only be two buildings, with West Oak operating as two schools, a middle school and a elementary school.
We would like to thank Ms. Song, Ms. Ray, and Ms. Simone for taking some time out of their days and allowing us to interview them and learn a little bit more about our district's past. These interviews were greatly appreciated because they allowed us to obtain a lot more information about things that the documents could not cover. We'd also like to thank Mr. Wilford and Mr. Rogers for giving us access to these documents, as the project would not be able to be completed without them. We'd like to especially thank Dr. Braun for helping us analyze this project and get it all started. We thank you for coming and listening to our presentation.
Thank you. That was awesome. I've learned so much from our past and our current, as well as our future. So we really appreciate all the time and the energy that you've put to do such a fabulous job for each other.
Thank you so much.
Cheers.
So before we get started for the regular meeting, we have one staff member that we'd like to recognize for the month of December for earning a Diamond Award. She was nominated by her colleague, Mrs. Hagan. Unfortunately, Mrs. Hagan could not be here today due to a prior commitment, but I'm going to ask for Principal Mr. Preble to come up and please read the nomination, so we can recognize our Diamond Award winner for this month, Ms. Ray.
Good evening, everyone. Board members, colleagues, Ms. Moynihan, I don't know how we're going to follow that one, but, uh, we're going to do our best. Um, as Dr. Shaw Lewis said, Ms. Moynihan was nominated for the Diamond Award by Mrs. Hagan. So I'm going to read her words as she, uh, as she submitted them to us. I would like to take the time to explain why I believe Ms. Sunny Moynihan is deserving of the prestigious Diamond Award. Ms. Moynihan consistently displays love and passion and understanding of the students of Diamond Lake School. She often gives up for lunchtime in the lounge to eat with students. This could be because of, be because of reward they have earned, but she sometimes uses it as an opportunity to check the students about changes she has noticed in their behavior. Since she builds trust in relationships in her class, her students feel safe and comfortable enough to share information from the daily and superficial third-grade drama to the personal stories of home life, struggles, and hardships. The helpful part for me as a music teacher is she'll say as she brings her kids down, "Keep an eye out for whoever." This is going out at home, and I want to see if they act differently in special school. She'll follow up with me, she'll follow up with the parents. She always follows through. This even applies to her former students. I once noticed she was talking to a fourth grader in the office. When I later asked what happened, she replied it was a student she had for math last year. He was having trouble respectfully communicating with the sub and with misunderstanding with an item in his bag. She helped him see why the sub appropriately reacted the way she did and how he could change his behavior to avoid getting into the situation in the future. This again was during her lunchtime. She is literally using every minute of her day to build their students up and show them that they have a trusted adult on their side. I am honored and proud to have her as a colleague. She shines bright like a diamond every day at Diamond Lake. Ms. Moynihan, come on up.
While they're taking pictures, I just want to share with the audience as well as, um, with our students, a diamond is a diamond. When a colleague or instructor or student announces, uh, a diamond is a special in our district, we're going above and beyond their role of responsibility and shining like a diamond. So we do this, uh, we used to do this on holidays, but it's become very special. And so we've had a lot of people that have been nominated. So we pick our top one, the district leadership team, Miles Mall, and then he selects the top winner, and Ms. Moynihan are in this one. So she truly is a diamond, and we are blessed and appreciative of having her. So, thank you.
So it is really a pleasure to be able to see staff and parents and especially students here this evening. And that concludes the presentations for the evening. We would love if anyone wants to stay, but we fully expect that you might want to go now. Thank you for coming.
Oh, thank you, sir. Thank you, guys. I really appreciate it.
All right. Next up is our business agenda. These are items for, uh, that have been discussed or will be discussed tonight. They are all for action this evening. First up is the omnibus vote agenda. Items under the omnibus vote agenda are considered routine and are non-controversial and will be approved by one motion. If any board members, staff, and administrative officers and wishes to have a separate vote on any item or items, that item or items are reviewed from the omnibus vote agenda and voted on separately. It resolved that Diamond Lake Seventy-Six Motive Education accepts and approves the omnibus vote agenda. Items A, Q, E, S listed. Do we have any comments or questions in our omnibus vote agenda this evening? I had a question, and I think it's part of the problem with sort of agenda five and three, my pack of property. It just had to do with the timing of our expenses and our revenues. They seem to have a whack this year.
Yes, uh, great question. And the, it, the revenue, see, the expenditures are pretty much all in line as far as the head fund and as the biggest, uh, biggest amount of expenses and revenues that we're generating this year. So the expenditures are pretty much right on target for the revenues that are a little out of whack right now, strictly to do with our state and federal payments. So like some of the categorical payments have not, that will not be received until December, whereas they were paid in October and November last, uh, two years. And a lot of our federal money is devoted to summer school payments, which we will not realize until later in the year. So pretty much a lot of our Title I, uh, Title III, and IV revenue, we're, we're not going to be able to receive that until the end of the year. So it'll come in one month something. So.
You have no concerns about, certainly, the company?
Correct. I actually called the state about this last week, uh, because I was exactly wondering why we haven't received our transportation revenue, and there's a couple, uh, special ed-related revenues we, we usually receive around this time, and they've just been delayed around the state. So no concerns over it. I believe they're going to be paid at any time in December. I'm keeping track of it. So I'll provide an update if you haven't received it by the end of December. Otherwise, all of our property taxes revenue is right on target.
And you said that expenses aren't typical. They're at a fifteen percent-ish, which would be for half the year, but it's still quite a bit more than the prior years.
Definitely, if you look at the total rep expenditures, you have to go into the tab, uh, the second document that touches on actual expenditures. So if you look at education fund, O and M, transportation, all those main funds are right on target. It's basically at forty-five million dollars spent on capital projects this year. So that just keeps it all up.
Which is referendum, in part, anyway, referendum.
Correct. So we basically expended, I said, I had a hundred percent expenses for capital projects. Anything additional that we're getting is all pre-construction work from Pepper and White, so it's a couple little bills. We won't realize the rest of our referendum expenditures until next fiscal year.
And what is this set to be, eighty-eight thousand checks at Alumated Bank?
That is the last payment for two of our bonds. We actually have three checks from Alumated Bank. It's just under one light item there. And we had, we basically finished off the last two grants, uh, sorry, last two bond issuances. Not necessarily one of those, but, but it's the, uh, school referendum, uh, refunding bonds from two thousand fourteen. We had two point three million dollars, and that was our last payment. And we also had a nineteen ninety-nine, um, bond, or eight hundred thousand dollars that was just realized. We're done with all those, and now we're just focusing on the two referendum bonds that we have.
And we built, structured them so that the referendum bond bonds would just come in right after these.
Correct. That's the rolling off that we have.
Right? Is this, is there any reason to stop, right?
It feels good that they're, that they're done now. It feels good that they're, that they're done now. We went from having four to now having two. So unfortunately, we're relying on these for the next 100 years, I think. We won't see it roll out for a while. We can party this one. We lost, we're done cutting two of those off. We're going to be killed there with these guys still.
Okay, did anyone else have any other questions about the beginning of the omnibus vote agenda? All right, maybe we have a motion to approve.
Castler, yes. Bordeaux, Halman, yes. Candela, yes. Walker, yep.
Yes. And this time, this is a series of actions that are required to take in the tax, to do the tax levy. It is required that we do these item by item. But let's put a procession if there are any questions about any of the items set here. Is it part of the business agenda item four, section B, anything I can do with the tax? Anyone have any comments or questions about any part? There's been no change to any of this from what you've been talking about?
Oh, you know what, I just pointed that out. There's been no change as far as both presented.
All right, we have no, no questions, let's move ahead. Maybe we have motion to approve the option of a truth in taxation resolution.
Castler, yes. Gaffey?
Yes.
Bordeaux? Hale?
Yes.
Halman? Yes. Candela?
Yes.
Walker?
The next one is the 2018 tax levy following amounts, which the total is $14,727,895 of the education fund, O and M fund, transportation fund, working cash fund, IRF fund, social security fund, fire prevention and safety fund, tort and immunity fund, special education fund, and CDO IMR fund. We have a motion to approve?
Halman?
Yes.
Candela?
Yes.
Liddell?
Yes.
Castler, yes. Walker? Yaffey?
Yes.
Maybe we have a motion to approve the resolution for the working cash levy in amount of $100,000.
Mason?
Castler, yes.
Yes.
Gaffey?
Yes.
Bordeaux? Halman? Castler, yes. Candela?
Yes.
Resolution for, or maybe a motion to approve the resolution for fire prevention and safety levy in the amount of $20,000.
Candela?
Yes.
Halman?
Yes.
Bordeaux? Hale?
Yes.
Castler, yes. Walker? Yaffey?
Yes.
We have a motion to approve the resolution for the special education fund levy in the amount of $70,000.
Second. Candela?
Yes.
Castler, yes. Bordeaux? Hale?
Yes.
Halman? Walker? Yaffey?
Yes.
And finally, we have a motion to approve the resolution from the CDO IMR levy of $17,895. Second?
Second. Hale?
Yes.
Halman? Bordeaux? Castler, yes. Candela?
Yes.
Walker? Yaffey?
Yes.
That concludes the tax levy. And next item has to do with school calendars, 2019, 2020, and 2021. So the Diamond Lake 76th Board of Education accepts and approves the 2019, 2020, and 2020, 2021 school year calendars as presented by the distribution team due to the updated definition of the intentional day from the I S E. Comments and questions on the side?
I just wanted to draw your attention to, and with the last meeting in November, you all flew to 2019, 2020, and 2020, 22, and 21 calendars. So recently, we were just notified by Illinois State Board of Education that they changed the definition of a school a year to now 176 days compared to 174 days. So that means that the days that we use for parent teacher conferences, we not have students attend, and that was acceptable. But because of the new changes from ISB, they're saying that students plus attendance will over 176 days. But what they changed also is that there's no minimum for the number of instructors. Call a student, call a school day, half a day. If you have a half a day and still count it as a full day, it doesn't, where it used to be 300 minutes. So now, what we asked to do is we kept the structure of the calendar the same. And so if you look at the memo for the 1920 calendar, we have conferences currently scheduled to go on November 25th and April 9th. And students would not attend on those days, but because of the new rules, we are going to have students attend and while we will be scheduled, and then teachers will hold conferences with a seven hour activity. And then to compensate teachers for staying usual waiting hours of their day, we are going to allow them to leave already scheduled until the very first of December 21st. So just really to save it for the next two years, but we need to do gap days for this too because we have 17 days to go forward in the 21, 22 calendar year. Both then, we want to have the parent, timer, and just wait until they set. So we thought that we could back the timeline to keep the calendar the same, structure the same, start time, start date, and then send it in, do the construction, and then share with parents that their children are due to be turned to a traditional half day where they would have all the parent teacher. So that's the change. The only, the change to the future is that we have to have students who will stay all the time and that they will be happy with the calendar for the next two weeks.
Hale? And no, it's not. Bordeaux? Halman? Castler, yes. Walker? Yaffey?
This is the resolution. We have resolved that 76th Board of Education's statement, this is the omnibus vote agenda. This is due to the higher, a clearly nonviolent, especially with the weather. And the thing about that. Any comments or questions on the side? We have a motion to approve?
Castler, yes. Gaffey? Bordeaux? Hale? Halman? Candela?
Yes.
Walker?
I have completed the business agenda. I have submitted board's direction. Comments or suggestions? I wanted to share that the the meetings for, I think we are considering all the information that are open in the meeting. All of these, by, for our board, post-credit, credit, and we have something else that we have. And we always had to be, we have, we have stuff. We have, we have. We have, we have. Okay. Any other, what are the questions? Do I know if there's a question? Yes.
I'm looking at our, for your review, we are trying to compare it with your time to make arrangements, reiterate through paragraph and what we know about CDO, so making it, and then we will go down with the memory and location and probably, or outside of the location and house and cancel, Mr. 76th, very much, um, location. But yeah, all of them. This is my, my, that, and we will have a board meeting tomorrow, on November 8th. And so we kind of will be back in, here in my house, all of that.
CDO?
It is under consideration.
I just want to remember the board.
Through second and fourth meeting.
So, do you think there was some, the CDO being left to here, right? All right, next up. We open up the floor for any public comments on any other items. Any comments? Others?
There's two items on the other calendar. And the first one, we have done the traffic study and study that lighted junction, traffic. And we were choosing the other things that we didn't have, exactly. And we, summary, all previous summary, that we have, suggestions for the, if we should be. Good news is we don't have to do, even if any of the type of issue that we have, we have. I don't do, I don't, well, one of the, of the, of the, of the, of the, of the, of the. The objective was that they were, in case, we have to, we have to. So in summary of this, we made that, really, they just have a stack or start, see the drop off. We have to have some parents, so we have lots to come in, we complete, well, on all, or pick up the students and they'll have 10 to 15 lanes later, come, also leave, and parents have a really big turn after that, similarly, they do a very, right now. So we're really looking at, whether, how all the parents, we can add that for structure and get that, and then we leave the parking spaces to the side, back of the building. And we'll just be the front, we'll be the front door, we'll have a drop off and then we'll be coming. So nobody will be, we can, and I agree, like, we can make the staff come along. There's a, that's, that's what's up. Lots of, but similar to the parents, the drop off, they turn around, but parents will come inside, that's, so there's, that's what I'm saying. That lots of, there will just be one lane for the fathers, and then the buses drop off, pick up, and then parents will come and do the drop off and the hop.
We expect, we, 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 yeah.
And we will, we'll be to hire, we'll be getting something of a traffic, drop off. So that's an hour of traffic and drop off. So once that happens, we can, whatever what to be added from varying the traffic pattern and will change that very, very. And then, so the additional parking, staff, for the, for the.
I hope that basically is hearing, pick up the drop offs.
Traffic, with that, do you need additional blacktop? Just to be on the side of that?
There's nothing that's required right now. What we're keeping in the back of our pocket right now is potentially having a park in the back under where the existing blacktop is, the, I think, two thousand twelve back there. Essentially, what Fairhaven has, they have a little stat parking spot in back. You have like 30, 45 spots back there. And it just really requires small widening of lane around the side of the school. It's not required over now. Based on the traffic study, we just need to do the drop off, tier drop off of parents, more than for the staff.
But this is, is it just to do the outside, the, the?
Yes, the entire playground is going to be completely redone. So there's all that pea gravel area back there now. That's all going to be dirt, grass, and the playground is going to be shifted a little bit far, uh, closer to where the garage is. So they're going to cut out a section of playground there and get all the playground that you can go in, probably over a sprint break. So we have a playground there and a new playground there. They kind of dealt with that in the different areas.
And through, through the society, anytime you kind of cross a particular line, it's going to be another, third, oh, 37 time. There were, there were eight issues, uh, I believe, one was, uh, teachers. And that, they're not, they're, this, this. The CDO. The second one, it was a little more concerned, it's the, has to do with, uh, one of those, literally, I guess, parents, that's the school for that, in that period, that, that CDO. It's been in the same place during levels for thirty years. It's a case of two, one of the, this is, and they, they named students, uh, drop towers, students, these, uh, students. The parents of drop towers, they seem to have, saying that, that they might have to move drop towers, they might have to do the, the, the program, and split it to a, to a, at least temporarily to a couple other, no, um, because of extent of that, this 72, the matter of comedy. Well, it appears that that was really, that really, that was really the texture. That was really, it was really powerful, really. it was really tough for it, really, it's, there, it seems that the, the ward of Seventy Three wasn't really aware of that, that, we were, they had to give that, as of, um, and, uh, and, the solution is, that, that CDO is, uh, is, right now, for five years, so, it's not a long-term solution, it's a short-term solution. So, there were a number of, I think, eight different, uh, combination parents, and former students, and former teacher, and, who got up and pleaded with the, uh, the governing board, uh, to, to, to keep John Powers center, the, 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 um, I subsequently, uh, contacted, reached out to Howard Rosewood, who's the CEO of the National Association of the Deaf, who's aware of this, um, and who had sent a letter to me, at that, at that meeting, um, again, supporting those, really, trying to encourage board not, not to do this, not to, uh, not to take away John Powers, uh, seventy, uh, 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 it, it appears from the different folks, that CDO wants to expand certain programs, and either less or one program, sees the, uh, power center as an idea of building. So, the thing that strictly most, was that, it doesn't seem like they're even above board, um, why they're doing, what they're doing, why they're asking, or, or, at least not a hundred percent, or, or. No, no, CDO, I'm sorry, CDO, and, uh, and, um, well, that's, I think, that as a district, we are one of many other, uh, districts, uh, in CDO, that, that we have a voice in this as well, and that CDO, um, can't do anything they want, they, like us, are, are servants of the public, and, and, so, I certainly want to put this over to the board, but, uh, I don't have all the information, I don't have, and, and, I certainly don't have all the information, but, it ain't all, and, something's going on here, and, to move a program that has been, uh, really successful, and, it seems like, if you're going to do something that is free, number one, whether have the long-term plan, to, 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 somewhere else, and, which is, you know, in a, in a, in such a way that, at least, uh, um, um, you know, about, you know, this, that.
What about, I think, I, 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 and, it's unclear whether the district's, that, the mainstream, actually asked, that one, and, quite frankly, if it expands, last year, one program, there's, there is a mainstream, uh, component of that as well, so, we, 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 you know, we, 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 uh, there was, there was. The, the parents, uh, um, definitely heard, who, who said, I'd move, oh, sure, it wasn't, not, no, not, it was more, it was more about, the school, the whole, really about the school, really about the school. So, the school, the way it's, would, served well, successful, wired, G G.
Right. Different communication, some of them, and then, you were saying that they didn't listen to, not communication?
No, they, they were blindsided, and, they were, they were, quite frankly, they were sad that, that it appeared that, these, and that, was, that, District Seventy Three, was the first, parents, that, you should, should, focus on the way that District Seventy Three, weren't entirely aware of that, that, that.
The space, what is considered, that, that, so, sort of, three, all, 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 all the staffs, that, that, and, 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 yeah, and, we just passed that, I'm, I'm, I don't believe that, that, like, maybe, I don't.
No, no, that's not it, no, CDO wants to do what we, uh, but, 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 what, what CDO said, was, was the reason, um, for looking into moving it, was that, District Seventy Three said, it couldn't accommodate, um, the mainstream of students from John Powers, who, 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 constraints.
It's, it depends, right? Do, is?
I think that's probably, their program as well, it's the last, um, uh, like, yes, for the time.
It's, 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 it's,
and they're looking at, carefully, this, 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 program?
The only indication of what they're going to do at Fairhaven, they want to have the, uh, uh, entire range of, of ages, they want to have basically early childhood through their transition program, so, I haven't exactly heard what their, you know, what exact programs they're considering, but, they're having their executive board meeting Thursday to make a decision on, on how they're going to proceed, so I think they're either going to proceed on buying the land and making an offer, or when they get, at that point.
At this point, you're looking at Fairhaven, high towards, the space, not going high towards similar program, or, the space in the end, mainstream, type, type.
CDO has, um, space concerns across the board, so, we consistently talk about our students with social emotional needs, that they need an alternate location, probably seeing with the superintendent, she does not, needed, what, what, are preparing, it's just nicely, centrally located, and it would offer the opportunity to, to consider various programs that it might support.
Well, given that we've made decisions to restructure the way we have, it would be helpful to ask the question and find out, isn't it, whatever areas we're thinking about using Fairhaven's space for, included, if it would affect us from the mainstream, like this one, back to the, the topic of, I, I hear you saying that you're concerned, but do you have any ideas of what, of how to?
I give away, sir, I think, as, I think, as, one of, an equal member, as one of the, 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 CDO, that, this is something that we could, we could, uh, we could, we could, we could give a request for, and, and certainly not, not, not allowing to, 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 knowing what's going on, I don't think we're going to be the only one, that's, tell you that, other people from the governing board, who, 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 they're, 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 we're not pleased, and made for all of that, um, as well.
So, is our opportunity here to do a FOIA ourselves, for some sort of information, or to send a letter, and, and, or, or, that, or?
Maybe, um, Dr. Sean Lewis, maybe, when I, like, just, 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 like, and, 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 just kind of sit down and, 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 like, maybe back to, 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 but, I don't know if it necessarily went forward enough, I don't want to, you know?
No, in a face-to-face conversation, I think, it would be more appropriate, I think, I, I know you want more information, I'm certainly want to provide it to you, so maybe just a face-to-face conversation would, would be appropriate, just kind of ask clarifying questions.
Or specifically, the, the question, that was, is, 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 really what's driving Fairhaven, like, the real, is, is that what, what you think, we're not doing straight answers at all?
I, I think that's, that's a combination, so, and, and, you know, why, why, why this, right, we, we, there's, there's spaces, she's all, why is, is one thing, here's what we, 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 there's no long-term solution, it's, uh, it's the future of, 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 was the future of deaf education, CDO, in county, because, five years from now, it would be, uh, much, it's, 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 matter of, of,
I think, I mentioned in the article, it said, uh, there's, uh, schools across the country, uh, which implies that there's, um, some other means of assisting children in, uh, in, uh, without having, uh, school specifically for it, but, it doesn't, to your point, that it's, 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 it's,
so, actually, I think you hit on, one of the things, uh, is a concern, which is, has their own, that, well, is one of the things we're thinking about, the issue of this man, right, after five years, because, most young, so, and, and, quite frankly, the fact that we're not being above board right now, doesn't make me feel confident that we're hearing the whole, the whole.
Dr. Rivers, do you know how our, what, 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 how they, they, through, through chat?
Yeah, now, it's, one is in the, um, last program, and one is in, um, um, deaf part.
Who's the last?
The last program, it's for a program, it's a program, like, for students who are something, typically autism.
Really, I, I, it's just, you know, holding them, for, for, that's, that's, what?
I know they'll reach out to us, and then, as a, I think, as, her, uh, to say, okay, can you use more information, you know, what can you show with us, and why, and then we can bring that, back to you, January.
And then, in the meeting, uh, did the CDO, government, uh, where was there, the government board, do they commit to getting more information to the governing members, or to the parents, or?
No, they, they really did not, they, they listened, but.
There's, no one has committed to, to more information, as part of that process, okay?
The, the corresponding secretary, basically, discussed, uh, that's, that's, options, and will share the more information on, on it, so.
So, you guys are going to take an actual step to try to get more information, you'll continue a full, a conversation, that's, 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 right? Thank you, John, for going to the meeting?
Truly, I went to many of them, I've never had one, ever, it was a spirit, it was a surprise, it was a surprise, and I went through every piece of paper that we got prior to meeting to see if there was any hint that I missed it, because I would have prepared to, and, and, I went through the agenda, I went through the emails, I went through everything, and I had no idea that we were, one, pressed to be divine, and, two, going to listen to nine crying individuals about a program, and, three, not actually, there was no, one.
All right, so, if this, I think, I mean, I mean, that, right, and the other others? So, at this time, the board is going to adjourn to executive session for some reflective of, 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 may we have a question to move to a second session? So, let's, let's.
Phil?
Yes.
That's where it gets, Rondo, Alman, yes, Gondello?
Yes.
Walker? Yeah.
All right, so, happy holidays, happy new year.
Happy holidays.